Good morning. Welcome to the Minnehaw County Commission Meeting of February 25, 2025. I'll call this meeting to order and note for the record, a quorum of members present with Commissioners Benninga and Karski absent. I'd like to remind everyone to silence their cellphone, and if you plan to speak during public comment, please sign in at the back of the room. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That brings us to our routine business.
Madam Chair, before we approve the agenda, I'd like to make a motion to amend the proposed agenda by deferring item number nine, considering an abatement application recommended for denial by the Department of Equalization on parcel 14045 for year 2024 property taxes, ninety-eight dollars and ten cents, to the March 4th, 2025 meeting.
I'll second that.
I have a motion to amend the agenda by Kipley and a second by Heisey. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for a motion now to approve the agenda.
I'd make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
I have a motion by Kipley, second by Heisey. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. That brings us to the consent agenda. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on any items on the consent agenda? Any requests from Commissioners to remove any items from the consent agenda? Okay, I will look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Heisey, second by Kipley. Roll call vote, please.
Heisey.
Aye.
Kipley.
Aye.
Feinberg.
Aye. Motion passes. Moving on to regular business, item number eight is the annual briefing from the County Safety Committee, and we have Maria Monkfold, the Safety Committee Chair and Emergency Management Sergeant here. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for having me, Commissioners. My name is Maria Monkfold, and I am the Safety Committee Chair. I am presenting today the Safety Committee 2024 Annual Report on behalf of the Safety Committee. As part of its commitment to safety, Minnehaw County has established a Safety Committee Compromise of employees from various departments who meet regularly to discuss safety-related issues. The current Safety Committee members are myself from Emergency Management, Tyler Gronk from Facilities, Mark Connerman from the Highway Department, Mike McGovern, Sheriff's Office Jail, Sandy Kinder from the Commission's Office, Justin, I'm gonna butcher his last name, I apologize, Pontario Leo from IT, and Maggie Gary from Human Services or Resources. In accordance with Minnehaw County Safety Manual, the Safety Committee also provides an annual report to the Commission. The briefing will serve as a report summarizing the activities of the Safety Committee during the 2024 year. Minnehaw County Safety Committee meets monthly during 2024 to review workers' compensation claims as well as any liability claims that the county may have have had in order to discuss preventative and possibly change, changes to avoid future injuries. Safety Committee members also complete routine building inspections on various county buildings, which include the Energy Plant, Juvenile Detention Center, the Annex Equalization, Highway Shop, Health and Human Services, and the County Administration Building. A checklist provided by the Safety Benefits through the South Dakota Municipal League Workers Compensation Fund is used as a guide during each inspection. The Safety Committee typically offers several trainings each year. These trainings offered, the trainings offered in 2024 were first aid, AD training, defensive driving, back injury prevention, and slips, trips, and falls. These trainings are required in order for the county to receive a Safety and Loss Control Award from the South Dakota Public Assurance. In September 2024, Minnehaw County was awarded the Platinum Level Safety and Loss Control Award from South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance during the county convention. The purpose of the award is to promote loss control and safety awareness and to honor the poll members who work diligently in these areas. These are, there are four levels, bronze, silver, gold, and platinum, that can be awarded, and there are set standards in order to achieve each level. Minnehaw County has been awarded at least the gold level for each of the past fourteen years. In November 2024, Mike Connerman, Mark Connerman, excuse me, from the Highway Department, Mike McGovern from the jail, Maggie Gary from Human Resources, and I attended the Annual Safety and Loss Control Training Conference, a two-day conference held in Pierre. This annual conference is a valuable opportunity to learn about safety and loss control resources, and having at least one representative from the county in attendance is a requirement to receive a Safety and Loss Control Award each year. Finally, South Dakota Municipal League Workers Compensation Fund provides loss control credit to workers' compensation premiums for entities that follow their recommended safety guidelines. Some of the guidelines include having an active safety committee, offering employee trainings, completing annual billing inspections, and coordinating other recommended changes by SDML. A nine percent credit totaling fifty-four thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars was applied to Minnehaw County's 2025 workers' compensation premiums for the actions performed by the Safety Committee. This is the same percentage credit that was applied for 2024 premiums. Please contact me or any of the other Safety Committee members for additional information. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone here who would like to speak on this agenda item? Commission comments or discussion?
Madam Chair, just wanted to say thank you, Maria, for all that you do and your staff. I understand that your department relies heavily on volunteers. I am curious how the numbers are for this year. Are you lacking volunteers or actively recruiting? And if there's someone watching this who would like to serve their community, how might they go about applying to be a volunteer in Minnehaw County?
So as part of emergency management, we do have three various volunteer groups. We have Minnehaw County, excuse me, Police Reserves, the Rescue Squad, and the Dive Team. Our numbers are low compared to past years. We are always looking for volunteers. I don't have the total right now, but I know that will be presented next week or the next commission meeting as well, so I don't have the accurate numbers at the time off the top of my head. But for people who are interested in volunteering, you can go ahead and go to the Minnehaw County website, and there's a volunteer form that will then direct you to an application. It'll be submitted, and it gets sent to myself and the Director, Jason Gearman. From there, we'll contact people and then connect them with the prospective leaders for each group, so, yeah, no problem.
I would also like to just pass on thanks to you and to the Safety Committee. I know if Commissioner Karski were here, he would make some comments about the importance that this committee provides for our county and for our staff from the insurance industry perspective, but I believe it's a very influential committee in the work that you guys do. So thank you to the whole team. And moving on. Thank you. Number nine is to consider bid results and, pardon me? We're going to consider bid results and award recommendation for Project MC-25-05, Mill and Overlay, and authorize the chair to sign an agreement with Central Specialties, Inc. Bids opened 2/5/2025. Jacob Morris.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jacob Morris, County Highway Department. We opened the Mill and Overlay bid along with the Chip Seal and Micro on the same day because we had multiple alternatives for each, and we're just trying to make sure we could maximize our budget and our pavement management schedule. We are awarding all, both alternates on this project. One was an alternate both on the micro-surfacing and the overlay project, and when we looked at cost-benefit ratio, it made more sense to award it as an overlay project versus a micro-surfacing project. We received very competitive bids from all of the bidders. Their bids were very close to each other, and if you look at the engineer's estimate, it was three point three million dollars. That was based on unit prices from the last time we did a Mill and Overlay project, which just shows how much the price in oil has dropped and how much more confidence the contractors have in the stability of the economy today versus where it was a couple of years ago. So I would ask that we award the base bid in both alternates to Central Specialties. Thank you.
Thank you. Any public comment on this agenda item? Commission discussion or action?
Madam Chair, I guess I'll just ask Jacob a kind of a macro-level question. We continue to see, I guess you're talking about prices coming in lower. Is that starting to hit a big enough effect that you're getting, looking at maybe getting ahead on your five-year plan? Are we gonna do more projects in 2025 than you would have anticipated, given that change in prices now?
Yeah, so this is actually, we bumped up our pavement management schedule. Some of this money from 2026, some of this work was scheduled in 2026, but based on the bid savings that we had earlier in the year, we're actually using that funding and capitalizing on the current market pricing right now so that we can do additional work this year.
Yeah, just, it seems like you guys have quite a bit of cash on hand, so we wanna show the taxpayers that we're not just sitting on the cash, we're actually putting that into the pavement, quite literally, so. Okay, thanks for all the good work.
Consider a motion?
I'd make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Kipley, second by Heisey. Roll call vote, please.
Kipley.
Aye.
Heisey.
Aye.
Feinberg.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. That brings us to item number 10, consider bid results and award recommendation for Project MC-25-01, Chip Seal and Crack Seal, and authorize the chair to sign an agreement with The Road Guy Construction Company, Inc. Bids opened February 5, 2025. Jacob.
Commissioners, Jacob Morris, Highway Department again. This is chip sealing. Chip sealing, we generally just do currently after a Mill and Overlay project or new asphalt pavement. We do it two years down the road to cover up that surface and then provide some additional traction for safety purposes. Our last overlay was in 2023, and we, on the map, the green lines on there are what we overlaid in 2023, and then there's two alternates on this project. One is County Highway 151 in Hartford. We overlaid that in 2023. The city of Hartford has annexed a large portion of that road, and they are taking on the responsibility of chip sealing this project, but we included it in our bid so that they could get better pricing, and they are awarding alternate one on their own. With alternate two, Palisades Road, that is the old entrance to Palisades State Park, which was rebuilt a couple of years ago, and to assist the townships over there, we included this in our bid as well. Palisades Township will award alternate two separately, so we were just asked that we could award the base bid to the overall low bidder, which is The Road Guy.
Okay, public comment on this agenda item? Commission discussion or action?
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Kipley, second by Heisey to approve. Roll call vote, please.
Kipley.
Aye.
Heisey.
Aye.
Feinberg.
Aye. Motion passes. That brings us to item number 11, the Legislative Update. Meredith Jerko, Assistant Commission Administrative Officer. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Meredith Jerko, Commission Office. So today is Legislative Day 27 and Crossover Day. So Crossover Day, today is the last day for bills to make it out of their chamber of origin. So if you take a peek at the House and Senate agendas for this afternoon, there are a lot of bills to be considered. So after today, we will have, you know, just as the first deadline for final introduction of new bills came, today we'll also whittle that down a little bit more if things do not pass out of their chambers. So tomorrow, we will have a little bit better picture of what is still on the table to be passed by both chambers and signed by the Governor. Couple of other important dates to note. March 6 is the last day to move required delivery of bills or joint resolutions by a committee to the Second House. March 10 is the last day for a bill or joint resolutions to pass both houses. Thursday, March 13, is Legislative Day 37, and then there is a break, and technically, Monday, March 31, is Legislative Day 38, and the day that is reserved for gubernatorial vetoes. So we are quickly approaching the end of the legislative session. So there is a lot, a lot going on. I will start out quick with two bills that you may have seen SDACC send a note out about, Senate Bill 37. That is the bill that would revise and repeal provisions related to the 911 emergency surcharge and the 911 Coordination Board. So that passed the Senate. It's been referred to the House Judiciary. That has been scheduled for hearing tomorrow morning in House Judiciary, so we are hoping for that to make it out of committee and then hopefully be passed on the House floor, as that would eliminate the sunset clause on the increase. So that increased 911 surcharge helps fund our PSAPs, our Public Service Access Points, and helps give some relief on our property taxes, because that is less budget from our property taxes that we have to fund. In addition, House Bill 1235 was another call-out, reduce the limit on the annual increases of property tax revenues payable to certain taxing districts and subject school districts to a limit on property taxes collected in a year. That bill is being heard on the House floor today at 1:00 PM, and that would reduce levy increase maximums from three percent to two point five percent. So again, since it is crossover day, if that does not make it out of the House, then that bill would essentially die. There is not any time to reconsider the, because if a bill does fail, there can be intent to reconsider, but today would be the last day for that to pass. Property taxes, Senate Bill 216 was heard last week in Senate State Affairs. I will scroll down to that. Apologies. Senate Bill 216, again, this is the Governor's Property Tax Proposal. That was heard last week in Senate State Affairs. They did add an additional amendment to add in grandfather language for the elderly tax freeze. Currently, this bill would increase the residency requirements for the property tax freeze program from one year to five years. So the additional amendment that was introduced just grandfathered folks in in case there are, you know, someone who's lived in South Dakota for three years and has had the property tax freeze for the past two years, they would be able to continue that moving forward. It did pass out of committee eight to one. There was a lot of testimony on both sides. There was, most of the opposition was, it's a term that happens a lot in committees, soft opposition or soft proponents. So our SDACC lobbyists, school districts, couple of other folks, as well as county commissioners, the Assessors Association President. There was mainly soft opposition from those folks. We do understand that, or those that testified, understand that there is, that there does need to be some kind of reform and change, but issues with some of the, with the cap on growth and how some of the assessment, how the assessment cap would impact equalization directors were brought up in the committee. There was support. The committee recognized that opposition, and they do hope that there will be collaboration with counties, school districts, cities, to make sure that they can get the bill to a place where it still provides property tax relief, but taking into some of the, taking into account the concerns of all of the different taxing districts that would be impacted by this bill. So that will be heard on the Senate floor today at, I believe they convene at 2:00 PM. So again, has to make it out of the Senate, but there, if it does make it out of the Senate, there will be a chance where it will be heard in the House and can, you know, additional testimony. There is time for more amendments to be made to address some of those concerns that taxing districts have. So we are, of course, keeping an eye on that. There have been a handful of property tax bills in the past week that were tabled in committee that just really aligned with this bill. So because they either would be too similar and duplicative or because they were in direct contrast, that if both of the bills were to pass, there would be conflicting issues there. So there are still some other property tax bills floating around out there, but many have been tabled or deferred to the 41st day at this point. A quick note on pipeline and eminent domain bills. I think I mentioned this last week, but a lot of the bills have been tabled or deferred to the 41st legislative day. There is still movement on House Bill 1052 that already made it out of the House. So there have been many bills, bunch of different topics, that already made it out of their house of origin, and we haven't seen a lot of movement on that, on those bills, because preference and attention has been given to the bills that need to make it out of their chamber of origin. So you can expect that the rest of this week, next week, there will be a lot of movement on bills that have been stagnant for a little bit, just because they already made it out of their chamber of origin. So, but in terms of pipeline and eminent domain, 1052, House Bill 1052 is the bill that is, has made it out of both chambers, when many other bills have been either withdrawn, tabled, or deferred. A note on election bills. Again, there have been some election bills that already made it out of their chamber of origin, so they, we haven't seen a lot of action on those, not a lot of movement. But there was one bill, Senate Bill 188, which would amend the eligibility to vote by absentee ballot. That was amended and passed out of Senate State Affairs. So this would change some of the deadlines on absentee voting. And it would require an application stating why an absentee ballot is needed. It adjusts some of those time periods as well. So we are keeping an eye on that one, just because if passed, that would greatly change, you know, our, our process for absentee voting. So keeping an eye on that. Again, that also is being heard on Senate floor today, has to pass to get into the House chamber. That is, oh, and I apologize, one more property tax bill, House Bill 1019. That was the original proposal by now Lieutenant Governor Tony Van Huisen to eliminate education levies on owner-occupied, single-family dwellings and to increase the sales tax to five percent. That was deferred by House State Affairs to the 41st day. So just wanted to give an update on that, because again, that isn't a property tax bill that affects us, but I know that there was a lot of talk and discussion around that bill this session. So I'll stand by for questions. I'm sure there's other bills that you have questions on. There's been a lot going on. It's been kind of a crazy week for the legislature, but happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Meredith. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this agenda item?
Hi, Leah Anderson, Minnehaw County Auditor. I wasn't planning to speak, but I just thought I would touch base on that SB 188. I've been working pretty closely with the prime sponsor. The one thing that would do for us that would be a big benefit is end that in-person absentee on the Friday prior to the election, which would result in several things that would be positive for us. One, anybody that votes on Monday in-person absentee, which this last election, we had 1,200 people vote, we do not have a way to indicate that they voted when it comes to Tuesday Election Day. So we print the registration lists on Saturday, and then anybody that's voting on that Monday does not get recorded in that registration list. So this would be a positive change for us, since we have so many that vote on that Monday. And then another thing is it would shorten the in-person absentee voting. We, as a county, spend about sixty-five hundred dollars a week just providing the staff to run the absentee voting upstairs. So in a way, reducing that timeframe would help with the work requirement. Now, I know there's a lot of opposition on taking away those days of voting too, so there, we're trying to come up with a good balance in how could we make that process better but not take away the rights of people to vote. So I just thought I'd give you an update on that one.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Any commission discussion? I would just like to say thank you, Meredith, for all the work you do to keep up on all of the different bills that are moving through. I know it's a time-consuming process, and I appreciate your breaking it down for us.
Of course.
Okay, let me see. That brings us to the opportunity for public comment. If anyone would like to address the commission on a non-agenda item, now is your opportunity. And remember to sign in in the back of the room and state your name and county of residence when you begin speaking. Public comment is limited to five minutes per person with a total of thirty minutes for public comment. Good morning.
Good morning. Cindy Meyer, Minnehaw County. I just want to give a little more update on election bills. Representative John Carley brought forward a Senate Bill, brought forward Senate Bill 217, and that would have banned all election equipment, including tabulating machines. I have, we had gotten experts from around the US. We'd gotten testimony from four different people that are experts in the field in regards to the computer equipment and software and such, and they all provided testimony, written testimony. One, in fact, provided verbal testimony. We, we got shut off on time, but we did have a run at that in the Senate State Affairs. So I just wanted to recap for you a couple of things. And as I said, I emailed you the documents. These, all, all four of these gentlemen attested that the machines are not in compliance with the EAC, which is the Election Assistance Commission. They also highlighted that they are illegal under the HAVA guidelines. And I'll read that piece for you here, because I thought it was quite interesting. "The tabulators, which are considered hardware, are part of an integrated system. In South Dakota, the tabulators are integrated with Total Vote, which is the election software. Total Vote, and by extension, the tabulators are illegal under HAVA for the following reasons. Total Vote's integration with tabulators fails afoul of the legal requirements as part of the voting system because it claims to be an election management system and an election night reporting system. Election management typically includes consolidation of precinct reports into county results and county results into statewide results. These combined results are usually printed and given to the county commission for certification, meaning the election management system also produces the canvas documents and the audit trail for the elections. These are two functions that are clearly part of the voting system and require certification. Total Vote does not possess the required certification from an accredited lab." Going on to say, Total Vote, of course, is internet-connected, and the election and voter data is stored on the cloud, which opens up an enormous number of vulnerabilities, especially as the software touches all parts of the election system, making the ability to cover up fraud very easy. This seems to be the strongest argument against it, as people inherently understand that anything on the internet is vulnerable. We can all recall how public officials were falling all over themselves telling us that the election system isn't connected to the internet, following the 2020 debacle. Any election using Total Vote is almost completely run on the internet, except for the act of running ballots through tabulators and printing out a tape. The printed tapes are rarely, if ever, reconciled to the electronic aggregated results from the soft, that the software produces. The tabulators provide numerous vectors for subversion, but even if they weren't and were totally in isolation, the process of data delivery is not secure. So our experts provided testimony, and we even had President Trump coming out last week. and stating that he is calling for a nationwide change to a nationwide system with paper ballot, a paper ballot voting system only, no machines, one-day voting with ID and validated citizenship. So even the bill that, that was just presented in regards to SB 188 limiting the absentee voting, President Trump is putting forward that we get rid of all absentee voting because it is not secure. So I have emailed you all these documents I am referring to. I hope you will take the time to read through them and let it resonate that our elections are still in jeopardy and that we, the people, are not done fighting this fight. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment this morning? Okay. That brings us to commission liaison reports. Are there any commission liaison reports?
Madam Chair, I can lead us off. We had planning and zoning last night. Commissioner Heisey was nice enough to join us, so appreciate you joining us, Cole. Mostly routine items. We did have a joint meeting with Sioux Falls and then the regular county planning meeting. Notably, we had a couple items that could conceivably get appealed up and back to this body. You'll recall our Mueller pallets issue. They asked for an amendment to their conditional use permit to do, to handle different types of wood rather than just untreated wood. So that was approved last night. And then also over in Corson, the sand and gravel pit operation by Knife River asked for an amendment to their conditional use permit, which was approved as well. No testimony on the Mueller pallets issue, so I think they're potentially proving to be good neighbors over on that side. But we did get some testimony from some residents near Corson with just some, some concerns about expansion of that plant out there. Not necessarily topical to the change in the conditional use permit, but just more broadly speaking. So we'll see if that becomes an issue going forward. And then on, speaking for the state's attorney and our defender offices, I went down to Vermillion for a career fair at the law school. I know we're actively recruiting more attorneys, both prosecutors and defenders, so we need all the help we can get here in Minnehaha County. But I think we were well-received among the first-year law students for a networking session. And then the second and third-year law students came to a career fair. So I think our state's attorney and defender offices will be making plenty of job offers and trying to fill spots. So, and I guess I would also note, I think it's going to be interesting. I had a chance to talk to Dean Neil Fulton at the law school down there, and they're working on an alternative pathway to kind of have a path where you don't have to take the bar exam, but instead you commit to a couple of years of public service law. And so I think that's going to be an interesting track for us to potentially recruit second- or third-year law students that want to do externships in our legal offices. And by doing externships and committing to at least two years of service with the county, of course, this would apply to any government or public service employment. But then they would avoid having to take the bar exam. And as somebody, and I see our state's attorney representative over here, that we, we're the, we're the old-school crew that had to take the bar exam. So there's a part of me that says that's a rite of passage, and everybody should have to do it. But if it's in exchange for public service and an externship and knowing that they've got the skill set and are able to do the job, that might be a good balance. So the dean was saying there's quite a bit of interest in applying for that program at the law school. So we should have some people on that pathway. It's just a, a choice for our prosecutor and defender offices if they would want to employ people through that track. So that'll be another conversation going for employing more attorneys at the county. But that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'll be very brief. As many of us know, the Treasurer's Office recently implemented the 605 Drive system to handle vehicle registrations. They've been having quite a lot of issues. That's one of the note, for the sake of the public's knowledge, that is being worked on. And I'd extend some grace to our Treasurer's Department and their staff, and they're really trying to do their best with what they have. And hopefully, within the next week or two, the issues that they're having will hopefully be resolved. I was going to bring up the law school career fair. Commissioner Kiple got to that before me. But I will note that there's a trial academy that the public defender's office is going to be participating in peer April 9 through the 11. And I'll just happen to be there myself, so I might stop by and speak to some of those attorneys. There's a number of other items that I spoke to our public defender, Tracy Smith, about recently, but I'll bring them up at a future meeting. That's about it.
Thank you. Okay, any non-action commission discussion?
Madam Chair, I'll just congratulate you on running a nice meeting. It's easier when Gerald and Dean aren't here. Is that, is that... We'll give them a hard time, but appreciate you stepping up as vice chair and running the meeting.
Yeah, thank you both for all of your motions and seconds. It's been busy. All right, that brings us to the close of our meeting. There's an executive, executive session immediately following the commission meeting for purposes of SCL 125-2, 1, 3, 4, and 6. I would entertain a motion to enter executive session.
All moved. Second?
Motion by Kiple, second by Heisey. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. We will go into executive session in the training room next door, and we will begin at 11:00 AM.